OJT.
[laughing]
There's a meeting that's already been called to order, if you would, if you'd stand with me. And Brother Rob, you're just going to pray.
Obviously.
Okay.
Our God, thank you for the privilege to serve. Thank you for your health and the blessings of life that you've blessed each one of us with. We pray for those less fortunate than we are tonight in our own community. And we pray for the Pitts family for strength and for grace and help them through the days that they face now. Thank you for the privilege to serve our community. We ask that tonight, those things that we do and say would be in the best interest of our community, you yourself, the Lord, that we do. Amen.
Amen. Let's play together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. All right, moving to consent again, consent agenda. Was there any, were there any of those items that any one of you wanted to pull out? If not, I see a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Are we getting five for our minutes regular now?
We're still getting that form.
Up there.
Here.
That's the two I got.
We're getting it finished, it's a big deal.
Yeah. Still probably trying to get this beefed out a little bit more, and we got more conversations about that, but they've been very regular, though I will say, we'd ask for them to be regular, but still trying to get a little bit more beefed out, but we're getting some good information. And that's been behind the tab, it says fire department minutes, if you want to look at this. Thanks for that question, good question.
I made a motion to approve the agenda.
All right. All approved.
I'll second.
I mean, second. All right, Mr. Parks?
Yes.
How you doing? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
I'm sorry to call you pastor, sorry. It's right there.
Yes.
So I'm a yes. Thank you. We're going, uh, next, we're going to be opening bids for our CEI services, and so we'll crack those open. Uh, I do want to make sure, if you would, please pull out your, um, pull out your ranking sheet, and as I open these, we're going to enter the name. Uh, we have, at the top left, you see, uh, line one, two, three, and four. We only have two tonight, so when I open the first one, we're going to put the name for the first packet on line one. And then make sure that you see, over in the middle of the form, you'll see firm number one, that's where you're going to rank. What we enter is number one at the top, right? And then you'll see firm number two, that's your rank. So I'm going to open firm number one. It's going, it's from Alday Howell Engineering. Let's go ahead and write that on, uh, firm submitting proposals, number one.
You didn't have one?
I don't have one.
Did I take yours? I don't think I did.
There were two laying on the table.
Alday, I think I'm going to get back.
That's important to you. That's important to you.
Hold on, name one, eight, two, three, four.
First is number two.
There you go.
Yours should be three.
There you go.
Is it outside three?
Yeah. And most of us think it's three.
Three. Okay.
Okay. So, uh, so this is going to be Alday, A-L-D-A-Y, what L? Alday Howell? Howell, H-O-W-E-L-L, Engineering. And we'll go ahead and open those up and pass those out to you. So just for making sure everyone understands tonight, what we're doing is that we're formally opening these bids. We've called a special meeting for Monday night for us to take, have the chance to read over these bids, come back Monday night with our evaluation, uh, and approve one of the bids. It should definitely, should definitely pay. So we got this formal open.
That was mine.
Okay, do I have five? Yes. There's no, no particular order then? Go ahead and I'll just let you pass those on there. We won't read over those right now, we'll open them up in just a minute, but I'd like to go ahead and make sure we move to the next one. And the next firm is Pitt Smith Group, traditional spelling. Getting an Amazon package, you gotta make sure you know where it starts, or you might look foolish. Or you might look foolish anyway. Lynn, there's your.
Okay.
Try to talk.
Thank you.
See, that goes down there. So I really just like to open up the form to any of the council, council persons that, uh, might have a question about how to evaluate these. I'll tell you, this is my first evaluation for the town of Walsall. Evaluated a lot of contracts in my life, but never for the town of Walsall. Uh, if anybody has any advice or any questions, I'd like, if you could share that, and, uh, but again, we won't be doing any, I would think, any true evaluation, but glad to answer any questions you may have tonight, or amongst us how to answer the questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Probably for the board. Uh, do we have any minimum standards? These are, these are only, and I ask out of fairness, I would kind of go firms, this is a fairly new firm, does that, if it says you need 15 examples, and they have three to five, or what do they have in here? Does that count against them?
I can give you all the RFQ that we put out, if you want to compare the RFQ to this. That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, can you do this?
Yeah.
And our Walsalls, since they responded, did they meet all minimum requirements?
Correct.
Yes, and I guess you have that, you know what, I'd like to ask you, actually, you're not going to before, can I ask you on Monday, if y'all could help us with making sure that they all meet their?
Yeah, yeah, I haven't looked at them either, so.
No, I'm saying on Monday, that way, when we come back together Monday night, if we haven't read it and haven't understood the RFQ, I could ask them to make sure that that is a minimum. I have that confidence as well, but, all right, so I don't think there's any action to take, I'm not trying to rush through this, but I also don't want to just look at pretty pictures.
Also today, this morning at 10 o'clock, we opened the construction bids. Jonathan took those to go through and make sure they met all the qualifications of the construction. We'll also award that bid Monday night at 5:00. He'll bring them back and let us rank them, give us information on each one, and let us rank them, and then, so we'll, he'll let me accept that bid Monday night, too.
That was important.
The construction.
This project.
Same project, the construction, this is inspection.
Inspection.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table these to our meeting on Monday, or whenever we, if that lasts, I'll make a day.
I second that motion.
All in favor then?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
I say all in favor, then I ask.
Yes.
Mr. Rappert?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you for that. All right, uh, we're having audiences in, I don't have anything posted, but was any in the, anybody in the audience, meaning to sign up and?
Must have been.
Be glad it wasn't me. All right, uh, any non-agenda audience, because I can do that, where I'm asking if you wanted to step in. All right, moving on to the clerk section.
All right, the project updates are listed in here, um, for the, it is under the clerk tab. So last month, they were in purple, looking, this month, they're in the brown. The plans for the water well are now at 98% complete. As soon as they're finished, then we'll submit them to the grant administrator and then to Florida Commerce for approval. On the Second Street, um, thing, um, project, the plans are at 95% complete. Last time, they were at 90, now they're at 95. On the Oide and Cora, we received preliminary review questions from the environmental review, and Fred Fox, our grant administrator, was working on there, there was only two questions, and he's working on the reply for us. On the coronavirus, um, project, which is the Collins House out here, we received an amended contract from Florida Commerce to change the project from rehab to demolition. The initial contract with them, to Florida Commerce, when we applied for it, was to rehab the building, but, um, we changed now to demolition due to engineers' reports that the thing was no good. The amendment has been signed by the mayor, and it's been returned to Florida Commerce, so now I'm waiting on that amended contract to come back. Um, on the back, on this Jefferson Street project, of course, we put out the bids for CEI, open them at the council meeting tonight, and both CEI and construction bids will be awarded on March 24th, and that's the same for the Jackson Street project. On the Possum Palace, this is for new playground equipment and renovation. The grant administrator's begun work on the commencement certification forms, which are due no later than May 2025, so we're working on those. And once we get those turned in, that's when they'll give us the okay to go ahead and spend the money and get the, start on the work. And then on the Rogers Square, the RFP for grant administration and RFQ for engineering was advertised on March 19th. The bids are due on April 14th, and will, will be opened at April 15th, and will be selected at the council meeting on the 17th. So, um, that's our, um, plan for these, and that's the update. So have any questions on any of them?
I'm just going to go back to my question, I may continue, do we know what the 2% is left on the power system? Do we know what the 2%?
It's the, it's the water level. I think, y'all remember the last time Jonathan was here, he was talking about the cap he couldn't get off, because he didn't want him to try to take it off because of the rust, y'all remember that conversation?
Yes.
So Phillip went down, and Phillip got the cap off for him. Um, he did come down and try to get the water level, but he could only get the thing to drop down to about 40 feet. For some reason, it's hitting some at 40 feet, and he couldn't get it to go down any further, so I'm not sure what the plans are now, but literally, all we're waiting on is something to get the water level at the wellhouse.
I was going to speak from my standpoint, and that is one of the things that, um, you know, the report was to us, was sort of as, okay, this might be your fault, I kind of insinuate that unfortunately, or I heard that from this conversation. I'd really like, if his supervisor could come to the next meeting, because this is really getting, really getting along in the tooth. I mean, and I ought to reiterate my concern, my concern here is not that we're going to lose money, because it's not our money. Our concern is, is that we may be risking the future of safe water for our residents, that's what my concern is. We need to get this project. I know he keeps assuring us it's not going to get cut off, but I just want to restate my concern, and I just feel like, I'm concerned for the citizens of Walsall, not necessarily this project, you know, getting done or not done, or debts delayed or whatever. Oh, my brother, you were about to say something. You were about to.
We all hear this, we all hear the same presentation by the same person, and we sometimes go away with different opinions, like, I thought I heard him say, or I interpreted, uh, as you say, sometimes personally, I interpreted that, that all he needed was the cap off, and he had everything else, he could do everything else. Now we got the cap off, they didn't do it, we, we got the cap off, and, and we're no closer now to being than we were back then.
Right.
So.
I don't know, I moved to 98, but supposedly, they were thinking.
If I had 98, if I had somebody coming in on, on Saturday and Sunday, and we'd have 100%, if we had 2%, we'd have done some overtime, somebody could come in, but I, uh, I share your concern, uh, and, and I'm, I can't guarantee you that the legislature won't do something.
I know, I would have known.
I know there has been, there have been grants canceled and many flaws over the years at different, at different jurisdictions and things like that. I don't know that it would give them any bad. I, I trust, I, I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's an evaluation, right? That's an expectation, that's all he's stating too, right? Is, he's not guaranteed what the state's doing, but.
Yeah.
I'm hoping it comes out on that side. So anyway, just wanted to rush.
That well was put in by, uh.
Don Smith is the guy we always call.
Yeah, but, uh, the well was driven old, he, he spent the legislature, wasn't he, with that? I'm really bad with names, and I apologize for that.
Jamie Westbrook.
Jamie Westbrook, and, and his firm, somebody from his firm, or, I'm just agreeing with you, I don't, I don't care what, I need to hear from somebody that says, yeah, there's a stump in your line down there, Lee, and, oh, something's, if we got that lead off, and that's what all it's going to take to get the thing done, I need to know, we was getting some as-built plans to be negotiating.
Mm-hmm.
Our search plans wasn't given to us at the end of the process. We only have as-built people here on everything we ever did.
But I mean, even at this point, probably every engineer in mind in this building is thinking, do you not have a camera you can draw, right? So there's, there's things they can do, that we move them past.
Where would I find Jamie Westbrook?
He's County Commissioner from Jackson County now.
Oh, Jackson County.
But I'll give you his cell number after the meeting.
I'll just go and reach out.
Yeah, he's, he used to be in the state legislature, and now he's in the county, he's the county commissioner in Jackson County, yeah, he's a, he's a, yeah, pretty well-known pivot figure.
I don't think we'll make trouble with Parkers on that tonight, but I just wanted to make sure I express some thoughts on that. Yeah, thank you, lady. My vote is status.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, brother, I didn't.
No, 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 Rogers Square right now, we're going to do that, that one may be concern the least because it's 2027, that's like week after day, it's John.
Toy truck, it's state, it's the country.
Grants, it will be before, see, all these was, uh, in 2022, now you're in 2025, and guess where we are today? 2025, we had program.
First quarter's over.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, I just don't want to lose sight of some of these things, and we do have extensions on, on certain.
Yeah, almost all of it.
Yeah. It may be a bad time to have so much for one, since 77 is now amongst us, but, um, when I look at these things, and I see them beginning and all, uh, we're fixing to do some good things in Walsall in the next couple of years, and, and I just, I just hate to see any of that, any of that. Did the, uh, on the legislative appropriations, uh, did you, you went to that meeting, whether the, if they said anything to us about the next phase on the Possum Palace, you know, I come out, by the way, just a few minutes ago, coming from home, and got all that new red facade down there and all of that, and then orders that it needs to be replaced or be repainted, something like that, we need a, we need a better living facility now.
We submitted the appropriation, and I had a, a call back, two questions from, um.
Andrew?
Yeah, who she worked for? No, she works for, um.
She works for, she works for Trump.
Yeah, no, the other one, Abbott, Shane Abbott, had two questions, call back from Shane Abbott, and I sent a clarification on it, so, um, he acts like he's going to try to help us.
Excuse me.
The summary I did again this, um, month, like I did last month, just showing you the percentages, um, you can see that, that we're still a little bit over in the, um, expenses, and the income for this month actually went above the expenses, which was great. Remember, the, even the last, uh, last meeting, we were still waiting on some money to come in, so, and then, uh, the water and garbage is pretty level where it needs to be, it's the second sheet, so. Still working it, still looking through it. The next thing is, y'all had asked me about employee evaluations, and I did those, and I've included those just for y'all to be able to book, um, the, under the reviewer comments were my comments, and the others were the questions that Kim and Phillip filled out. They're both doing great, I mean, they're doing great. And I was able to leave Kim herself this week, meeting on vacation, and she did really good, and she did a great job. She probably called me one time, so that was good.
I suppose you're going to fill out your name and position there.
Yeah.
Really good feedback from them, it's really good to have positive feedback from employees.
Yeah. I don't have a lot of personal interaction, even though I said, Kim, when I come to sign checks or contracts or, maybe more, if I sleep, go to public road, I stop and talk to him, but you think things like the lead of the, the stopper on the pipe and something like that, Phillip seems, he seems to me like he's, he's, uh, he figures, he figures it out. He, he seems like, every time I see him, he's easy, mowing, whatever, I don't know what the baddest attendance you can.
He's not missed a single day.
I didn't, I didn't think much, but, uh, I think we've done a good day's work from about a year. That looks up a pair of.
One of the things that he had mentioned at the bottom was the tablet with the GIS capability. He's been using the phone, um, version of Diamond Maps, which is something, I guess the town's had for a long time, we've never used it, where you can access GPS every, uh, water valve, every shut-off, every fire hydrant, he wants to be able to put on there the graveyard, where we can, where we actually have a GPS. The phone is only so good, but the Royal Water guy came by, was helping with some other things, and he showed you this tablet that he has, it's $2,000, but it pinpoints the exact GPS thing, and Phillip's just like, oh, I have to have that, so. I'm hoping maybe we can take our non-hawful water that we've started using, selling this summer, when it gets, we'll really start using it heavy, and get him the tablet. But he's GPSed almost every fire hydrant already.
Yeah, and several water cutoffs, I mean, I don't know if y'all ever driven around and, like, suddenly you see this little blue valve, right? And, I mean, he's done the work, it's just that right now, that app on his phone is smaller, so we can't really use it, but to eat those ones, and that, that's a huge advantage to see, because we did not know a lot of that.
But it was great, even like for the Dollar General, as they, you know, they just wanted to go in there and start digging, nobody knew where the lines were, where the cutoffs were, but as we found them, we've located, he's actually GPS them, so next time, we'll have the exact GPS location of every level, so.
That's good. Dave started that four, five years ago, I don't think he did it just to, I remember one, that, that probably turned up to go to James and Ricky Miller's place, with those huge.
There were a few entries in there, might have worked.
Yes, but if he, if he was done on our, that'd be one of the extra names, he'd be friends.
And I'll say personally, I have worked with both of them, I trained, uh, Kim on how to go out and remotely read meters, and, uh, first time, uh, we, we sat in the, she sat in the front seat, and I sat, drove around, the second time, she sat in the back seat, so I didn't interact with her, and that way, she made sure she was gathering it all, and then the third time, she drove by herself. I mean, yeah, she learned very rapidly, and again, we already have seen the evidence of what the maintenance guys are doing for, so.
Yeah, they're both doing really great. Okay, the next thing is the water operator, so after the last meeting, we talked about if we wanted to go a different route, um, given Mr. Register 30-day notice, and then if we weren't able to hire somebody within 30 days, could we go out and seek temporary help? Y'all asked me to ask Jeff about it, I did call him and talk to him about it, and he said, if we had a lapse in service, we could go out and hire somebody on an as-needed basis without violating any kind of laws or rules or whatever. Um, he agreed that the best way to do it would probably be to give him a 30-day notice, and while he's working out that 30-day notice, go ahead and advertise for the job, and hope that it would all sync up, we could hire somebody at the end of that month before, you know, the 30 days were up. So we're back to, if the council wants to do that, if they want to continue the way we're doing now.
The council, have you advised?
The way we're doing now is no different from what we, I mean, we haven't done anything yet.
Right.
It's just that our, uh, and I'm also convinced that our attorney, uh, would issue if we had, if we did, if we did, went out for bids, and we didn't get any, or, or, there's another candidate, or something, then anyway, we can negotiate, but if we didn't get any, we don't have any money to negotiate, or we could negotiate with myself, negotiate hiring myself, but, um, so he's saying that we can, he's saying that we can do that.
Well, he said what he would do is he would go around to somebody local that does water operating, and hire them on a daily rate while we're trying to get the bids in, and we, and we have to have somebody here three days a week, so he was saying, if it, if it runs over a little bit, the meeting's not in time to hire someone, and then we hire them, but, say, we hire them the last week of the month, they can't really get started that third week, just to pay somebody on a daily rate, and then, um, we could do that and then enter a contract with someone else, if we want to do that. I think if we give him a 30-day notice, and we advertise the job, and we advertise the job for three weeks, and we come back to the council meeting, we hire that night, that would give the new person the last full week of the month to actually get familiar with the water system and stuff like that. The problem may is if he doesn't want to work the full 30 days of the notice that we give him.
But then it falls into that, that other capacity, right? We would have to just.
Pay somebody by the day. Yeah, by the day, or by the week.
I mean, I, I hope that doesn't happen, but.
So he's, has, he's responding to any of our actions, so he's aware of all of our actions.
Oh, yes.
And he did not, I know we didn't do a quote, but he's, uh, so we need, we need to pick a date, 30 days from, from beginning to date, and then that, that he knows that he would be without a job, I mean, he, he would, he would know that. My, my concern is highs and tees, uh, got highs and crosses tees, uh, he isn't, just one of those things, I know that he isn't going to sometime notice that he was, he's missed, but I do process or something like that, but I, I, I think it falls in his court to either respond to our advertising, or whatever action, whatever that action makes our next action be.
So i- if that's going to be your, um, the direction we take, I might recommend us to consider that we just say April 1st is the notice date, if that's your desire. I can tell you, at this point, I don't have a strong desire one way or the other, because I haven't felt the financial pain that y'all felt for, over the years, so I'm going to defer to the council to, uh, make some recommendations here, but if we're going to say 30 days, I think April 1st might be a good anniversary-type date to say 30 days from then.
What can he, what can he, did Jeff say what he could do with those 30 days?
Mr. Register?
Yeah, I suppose now he's had a chance to turn it back, and he said, oh, do you work for a high-end project, can we do, can we do that? They didn't submit a quote.
I feel like if we, every time at that point, he would have to be.
Yeah, I think he had submitted a quote. They had to be clean.
Yeah, that's all I can think about. If he didn't, if he didn't, he didn't play with his quote law, and that gives him a unfair advantage, I mean, and, and that's not the question, it's a tip, you should get over it.
Well, theoretically, if we, if we give him from April 1st to April 30th, and we pick, we council meetings again on April 17th, if we choose somebody on the 17th, they would have an extra week, the new person would have a week to get acclimated and that, and then we, we just pay Mr. Register his salary for the month of April, and then the new person could start.
Right, finish out the salary, finish out the 30 days, we, we wouldn't be cutting him short.
Right.
And that's basically two weeks, that's the 17th and the last day is on the 30th.
Okay, so what, what can we can, how do we make it work?
Basically, somebody's going to have to make the motion that we give him a 30-day notice, and that we advertise for the job.
Is appropriate worth it, we're vacating the position? Is that what we're doing? We're not terminating him for calls, he's been doing a good job, he's, there's no conditions, you know, there's no quality issues here that I know of.
I think it's going to smell a little bit if we terminate, if we, if we eliminate the position, and then turn around in two weeks and re-engage the position, and that's going to smell.
Right, what we're, we're asking.
We should ask Jeff how to work.
Yeah, but we're, but I just want to say, we're, we're going out for contracts for service, right? Right now, we're paying somebody. Is he in contract? Right now, we're paying somebody, is he a contractor?
We're paying him on a monthly basis, there was no contract ever signed with him that neither Jeff or I could find.
Right, so...
Basically, a month to month is what I would say.
Right, we, we, we can say we're putting him out, I agree with you, let's get Jeff's word in. But we could just say we're putting him back out of contract, right? We're, we're renewing that contract, and we're gonna renew it.
It's not a contract.
Well, right, we're putting it out of contract, and we'll be, again, Jeff might be the best person to give us some of those, to give words.
And roll on, huh?
Yeah.
I can get the word from Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just give you what you want me to do.
But can we say that we're gonna announce that on, as of, as of the 1st? And that we want to be able to hire that person from the May 1st start?
Yeah, I agree with that.
And then we let Jeff give us the word and get wraps around that?
We're gonna have a motion?
Can, can the, if you can talk to him, I know you lost more, but if you can talk to him, then, do we have this, I might deny?
How about...
I think as soon as we...
Can we vote on this one, then?
Can we?
We have a special meeting that we've announced.
You can't do that, a special meeting, can you?
No.
Well...
Yeah, you can make a special, a special...
You know, how you do the meeting, on a versus meeting, you don't have to have a versus, you have one issue on a special meeting. Except like regular meeting, when it's called between, between regular dates, it's just, it's a special meeting of the council, like the council business.
Well, it's not gonna be on the agenda, right?
Sure.
I believe it has to be on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be an agenda that, but you can, you can...
I think there's gonna be some time differentials, what time is our meeting on the day?
Five.
And what time are some of the conflicts we're having with schedules? Six o'clock?
Six, what time's the visitation?
Six.
So there's an opportunity for people to even call in possibly? For that five o'clock meeting?
It really should only have, the, the only thing that has to be done at five is opening the bids.
Right.
It should take...
I know, at that point, I wasn't concerned, shouldn't even take 30 minutes, right?
Yeah, maybe not.
But I want to make sure we can handle it, if we're gonna have that other agenda, that we have time to handle, before people have to leave. We...
I'm, I agree.
Do y'all think y'all gonna be able to make it to five o'clock and then leave? Okay, so we've already had that new meeting?
I would still leave at six, we've got this from six tonight. I could leave at six and then by six.
Just want to make sure we had time before we talk about adding a new agenda.
If you feel like you can do that, and, and I'm sure any of the rest of us could, but you're family. And if you feel like you can meet the family accommodations to do that, I'd rather not have more meetings than we have to. Since we've got that advertised, let's come back and do it.
Well, I did, I'll get the wording from him, so we'll, we're gonna table that. We gonna have to vote on that, or is that just something that's in the table? Well, we, we...
Do you need a motion to not?
Why don't we go ahead and do the motion to do it?
Okay.
And I can show y'all the wording.
All right. And then we'll table the action. Do I have a motion to... Go, go out for contract?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I was gonna say, she makes a motion for wording, so yeah.
I got it, I got it.
All right, Mr. Riker, how do you go?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Edgar?
Yes.
Chair of the chairs.
Okay, um, I think this...
Before you leave, make sure everyone did, I know we're not gonna talk about everyone, she did have an extra paper listening here, talking about the collections.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just want to quickly ask, I noticed that Dollar General's starting to hit its age number three now, that's still under control?
Well, we haven't been able to find who exactly at Dollar General is interested in paying the bill.
Okay.
I did send an email out, we, and usually when they set up the account, they gave us three different emails to send it to. We've been continually sending them to them, we're hearing nothing. I found a phone number on some stuff that we had, I called him last week. He was, gave us another email address to send it to, but we have not located yet.
I just want to be fair, by now, we would have been cutting people off, right? So do we put a cut on those on their door and say...
Well, they'll find, they'll find the number real quick.
I really won't, you should just pay him money.
You call me, I'm not answering.
I feel like once we find the right person, we can fill it up real quickly.
Will, will that force them to get, find the right person, when you say that?
Yeah.
I'll admit it, John, we're still current on the majority.
I'll, I'll get more aggressive next week, I'll have him.
I wonder why they're current this so much, that's, that seems like a big job.
Well, that's the other thing, is that they have two meters, one is for irrigation. The irrigation is the one that was $1,000.
Okay, so something, you're something.
I think something's wrong with that. I called around to two different cities and said, look, you know, y'all got Dollar Generals, what's their bills usually run? And they said the store and the irrigation shows you between $300 and $400. That irrigation bill's $1,000.
Well, if you remember, everybody's bill was off that month.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And now theirs could have been off too.
Yeah, and so, um, the, the big one is the irrigation thing that they have, their store bill is under the real small one.
It's still $240, but I guess that's...
Yeah. And the other two towns I called told me that runs $300 and $400 with the irrigation on it. So I don't know if it's running too much, if it ran a lot at the beginning of this, when the store was out there.
I'll leave that to you, I just wanted to make sure that we paid attention to Dollar General.
In that portion that the council has talked, they's having to consider cutoffs, because that's what we have to do differently. They, three of them, yeah, I don't mean the three of them, but whatever it is.
Promise.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, I just want to make sure everyone saw that, and we didn't just bypass, since it's not a agenda.
Congratulations, I don't remember the lifetime of ever, we only had two delinquent accounts on that collection. Of course, three was, three was still, only two, two customers in, in delinquency is absolutely...
It's very good.
Very good.
It's been painful, but we're getting there.
Before we leave the clerk section, was there anything else, son?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up the thing I gave y'all on the bicentennial concert. Sorry for the way it looks, I just pulled it off my email a while ago, it came while I was on vacation. Basically, the bicentennial committee is wanting every community to do something for the bicentennial, the county's bicentennial, maybe I'll do it. And, um, so Wausau did not have anything planned, and Leah Pettis is working with the Curtis Williams to do a free concert in Wausau for Wausau's bicentennial event. I don't know how it's all gonna play together yet, this is only information I got. It'll be May the 24th, it's gonna be free. And they're gonna get sponsors to try to cover the cost for the two artists that are gonna be here. But their plans are to have a, a free concert here in Wausau.
Is something going on with David, do you want to do that same thing?
No, I just want it throughout the month.
This is our day.
Yeah. And I'll try to get more information like next meeting, like I said, it came into my email and I didn't have time to follow up on it.
Which package did we end up doing?
We're not doing any of them.
Okay.
They're going outside to get their own sponsors to cover.
Well, I know that we had talked one time, you know about it, and I just didn't know.
No, that was for the, um...
The plaque.
Yeah, the plaque, we didn't do any of it.
Okay.
Yeah. They were very expensive.
I didn't, I didn't go to the event, I did just absolutely, I had it on my calendar to go and just overlooked. I meant, I meant to give that, but it looked like from the, from the press that they had a good event that day. So what are you asking us?
Nothing, information, don't ask them for anything, just information.
We needed endorsement, I had that conversation, but it's just, it's just...
No, they didn't, anything. That's all I had.
I did just want to recognize our clerk, something that probably some of you received on text, but just want to make sure during our last meeting, if y'all remembered that our clerk preemptively reminded us that our control systems were gonna be dropped, that they had announced that they were gonna be dropped, and I guess y'all got the text from our clerk that they were actually dropped. Did you actually share, I guess, someone I heard that?
Oh, yeah, we tried the SCADA system.
SCADA, yeah.
SCADA for the water.
Uh, that was dropped at the end of the month, late on Friday night, or Friday night. And because we had already voted, because our clerk had said that it had a time, we were able to rapidly engage a new vendor. I don't know, when did they get up?
Um, they got it up on Monday, Monday?
Was it Monday?
Yeah, Phillip and I came and turned the wells on and off through the weekend, manually turning them on and off.
And that's the other thing I wanted to mention, that in order to keep the system running, Phillip and the clerk literally turned the pump on. It's like in the olden days, if y'all ever had a lightning strike and your vacuum packed up and working, you have to go out there and turn your well. Uh, they did that for the town of Wausau for all weekend, so I appreciate that extra effort, wanted to call that out here.
Until there were no calls, we must have been successful.
Yeah, we literally just had to keep the tank overflowing, because you didn't know.
Yeah, there's no, nothing on that tank that tells you how much water's in it. So we literally let it run until it overflowed, and then we turned it off. And we knew that would get us about 24 hours, and so then we turned it back on and let it overflow again.
A lot of things happened in the background, and we had no way to...
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. I was out of water, I was a family.
And the SCADA is the product name of the technology that makes the two wells talk to each other so it's not working, it automatically builds it for it, if you remember. And so are we getting a new vendor for SCADA, or have we got a new product?
We have a new vendor for SCADA.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Yeah, SCADA is just an electronic system, but, and it also notifies them if there's any allergies and stuff like that, so... Both control and our control system. All right, just wanted to make sure, call that out. We're moving on to council person agenda, unless there's anything else. Mr. Parker, do you have anything you want to...
I don't have anything.
Ms. Carter? Mr. Carter? Ms. Carter?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I got two things. One is, I'd like to ask the council, do y'all mind, would y'all consider waiving the $50 fee for Anthony for Tuesday afternoon? For Tuesday for the wait?
I make a motion to that.
I'll say it.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to waive the $50 fee for the wait. Hold it there with that, take it?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair of the chairs, thank you for that consideration.
Yeah, thank y'all. Uh, the second thing is, people's already complaining about it being so hot, being so hot at the Puss in the Palace. Is there any way we can get some big ceiling fans and put in there, you know, those 10-foot ceiling fans?
I don't know, I could price them.
I can tell you there's been a lot of push to try that, and I think I would be in favor of us at least seeing what that's gonna take. And by the way, that might be an opportunity in this improvement, this small improvement we're about to do.
But fans?
Just one of the considerations, I don't know, I'm just saying.
They might, they might be...
Oh, yeah, I've heard, a lot of people have told us that they've seen those fans make a big difference.
Big difference.
In an open environment like that, where you have no other air moving.
And not to correct you, but we may have, we may have to be careful about that, because I think it identifies in there, it has to be clear, but I don't think you...
Sure, you're talking about, we're talking about... Sure, sure, I would never propose something that wasn't already, especially if I'm just giving it to this.
And it's a good idea.
Something that bounce off of the proof, not proof.
You wanna get the prices?
Yeah.
Okay.
I might get lucky.
I'm, yeah.
Don't want you doing it, well, maybe it was a discount.
Who, who runs, who runs next time, let me, the Bible one.
I've heard they're not...
It's gonna be a low year, brother.
I've heard that, the big ones are about $1,300 to $1,500 a piece, but I don't know that for a fact, but I'll get some.
I don't, you know, if we could get an LED so that when they spun that boo message, we could give people a sponsor, this is your...
Sure. I'd be the first one to sign up.
This is your fan. Ken Smith, I'm just seeing it, right?
I would caution y'all on one thing.
Yeah. People play it, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
I, if you could not figure out some way to protect them.
Yeah, it's not like being in a warehouse where you've got a controlled environment.
And nobody's there to watch it, or you can see the video after, in fact.
Yes, a good, good point, that's a good consideration we need to make sure of, yeah.
I, I'll agree that, if you're asking how we feel, I would agree for, we need to get the price, we learn from our...
We don't learn, we check it out.
Yeah, that's right, worst thing we can do is have a big note.
I don't know, we need to, we don't need to vote on that, I'll just agree. Thank you very much, good question. Oh, I skipped you, Ms. Riker, a little bit.
No, that's all right. Um, do we have any updates about the vandalism, or the donuts, or whatever was being done down there at the Puss in the Palace? Making the gates be locked? I don't, but I do have a new camera up there, trying to see exactly what's going on, haven't gotten anything on there yet. Since we put the camera up, haven't gotten anything. I'm pretty confident it's the people directly behind the Puss in the Palace, got four wheelers with the big tires on them. But I don't know that for...
Is that moving, you added a concern about having to lock up, or you're just...
Oh, no, I was just asking, somebody had called me over the weekend and said, did you know the gates is locked?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You know, there's a walk-through gate, yeah.
Yeah, they were also driving over the splash pad with the same vehicle.
Yeah.
It's a four-wheeler, or is it a truck?
We think it's a four-wheeler, we think it's a, but I'm not sure about that. Whatever it was, it was black, across, they drove slam across the splash pad.
Well, it's a good little jump there, we can watch. Sorry.
No, I've had people get pretty angry with me because the gates are locked.
Yeah, that's too bad, we have to.
You gotta hear the ronson for everybody.
Yeah, I think we might have got a problem there. What do we have down there? We don't have a basketball goal, the tennis courts are outside the fence, the playground you can walk into, the baseball field you can walk into. There's no reason for, for vehicles or traffic, except fun days and different events with the public, I did the council forces that night. There's no, no reason, and I'm a little young mother with a child, it needs to be driven down, and they have some things that, you know, but you're right. They don't, we don't need to be dragged in there.
Ms. Riker, anything else?
Is the splash pad on now? It should be, we turned it, yeah, we turned it on, I guess, I didn't know. Yeah, it should be. I, what I want to do is try to figure out some way to go over to the one that you step on, and paint on there, step here, or whatever. Because I'm, people had called me and said it wasn't working, and I've gone down there, and they're just not stepping on it exactly right. Or the kids are trying to step on it, sometimes, especially that initial turn-on, you've got to really step on that, step on that thing. Now, once you go, it starts going, it seems like it's easy, just keep tapping under whatever, but, um...
Then we can figure it out.
Yeah, I can, if I could just paint on there, step here, it would be really good.
You think vinyl would stick to it?
Huh?
You think vinyl would stick to it?
I don't know, might, if it is, I could get Sharon to do some vinyl.
It would certainly make it do a season, relieve a lot of questions.
Like the flooring is kind of gritty and then...
Yeah, but that particular one isn't, that particular, it's like a device, it's a light device, so it...
You need vinyl, it lasts to the season, it'd be very, very expensive to do.
Check on that, they, they tire within seasons.
Yeah, we could check on that, Sharon could do that for us.
All right, uh, Ms. Taker?
One thing, uh, I've been without word twice this week, and I've gotten calls from others. You can never land an accident, I mean, it's definitely, our construction will do that. But, but we might need to communicate with them, that as soon as that happens, I need to let them know. And then, you know, the E O C has got this thing, it's willing to go about things and protect everybody. Uh, I've got several calls that, we've been without word for hours, we've been without word half a day, or an hour, whatever it is, nobody told us, and things like that. I, I think we ought to do everything that we can, and, and get them to do everything they can to keep those water losses as known. Because one, one person told me that they've talked to maybe, maybe Kim, I think it was, they said we have to, no, it's somebody, it's somebody that works with contractors told me, we have to run those lines like seven hours or something like that, make sure they're flush and tested. So can you make them be without bathroom and cooking and all those things for seven hours, and I would be a minimal deal on most of us. And, and I think as soon as we let, let people know that they will at least, I'll call with us.
That's a clarifying question, are these been planned or unplanned, Adam?
They're unplanned, something is happening on Hagan Road, and I'm not sure exactly, but Ryan explained it to Phillip, something about their hat, they're doing a jumper box, because something didn't go right, that's supposed to be going right, and, no, these are unplanned outages.
And are they letting us know it's right then, or is it typically a delay?
No, it's typically when people start calling, we call them, although I've had the conversation with Ryan with Sitch multiple times, and what you...